Good evening and welcome to the Gardner Edgerton School Board Candidate Forum hosted by us here at Revolución Educativa. My name is Tricia McGee and I'll be guiding tonight's conversation. Thank you to everyone joining us this evening. We appreciate you joining virtually so you can share with your constituents and voters information so they can make informed decisions. Either this weekend, early voting, if that's still happening, or on Tuesday, November 4th, when I believe polls are open from 7 to 7. The forum will include opening statements, we'll hear four rounds of issue-based questions here from everyone, and then a brief closing reflection. Each candidate will have equal time to respond and we ask that all remarks remain respectful and focused on the issues. So, we'll go ahead and get started with opening statements. We're going to go alphabetically by last name, so we'll start with you, Julie.
Okay, I'm Julie Aldridge. I've been married to Brian for almost 26 years. We've lived in Gardner since 2000 and I'm a mom who have adopted four children. They've all graduated from Gardner Edgerton High School in 2003, 2005, and twins in 21. I'm a grandma aunt, great aunt to a lot of children in various Gardner schools. I have co-funded a nonprofit organization with adults with disabilities to be professional actors, performing actors and visual artists, not only locally in Minnesota, but nationally and internationally. I've helped the Kansas Disability Rights Council in changing special education law on seclusion and restraint in these public schools. I'm also a trained advocate with the Kansas State Department of Education program. And I'm appointed to several children throughout the state of Kansas to step into the role as their parent in their special education process. I have a master's degree in special education. I'm currently a teacher in a neighboring district. I'm also on the Gardner Edgerton Policy Committee and volunteer with various autism and special needs programs throughout the metro area. Why I'm here is because I will ensure that every voice is heard, valued, and validated in the Gardner Edgerton School District with dignity and respect for everyone.
Thank you so much, Julie. Keith, you're up next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Keith Davenport and I, like a lot of parents, really focus a lot of my time in trying to make the world a better place for my kids and hoping that they have a better experience, more opportunities than I did and do. I have four kids in the school district. My day job, so I'm an entrepreneur, I own several businesses in the school district. I have the great pleasure of getting to employ a lot of students every year from particularly our high school and have internship programs and things throughout my careers, throughout my businesses. And I love having the opportunity to volunteer in my kids' classrooms for like Halloween party tomorrow, for example. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Pastoral Ministry, Master's of Divinity Degree, and a Master's of Public Affairs. And I have been a public school advocate since 2018, particularly at the state level, trying to fight for more funding in special education and policies that make schools safer and are based on data instead of political ideologies. Thank you so much for the opportunity to connect with you tonight.
Thank you so much, Keith. We'll move straight on to Sam. You're up next.
Hi, my name's Sam Dominguez. I'm running for position four in District One for Gardner Edgerton School District. This is our third year in the Gardner Edgerton School District. I have a second grader now and a soon-to-be preschooler. I also serve on my son's local PTA board as their treasurer. I just, I love the community here in Gardner. I love that like small-town feel where you really feel like you have a whole village behind you everywhere you go out here. And so I think that's kind of what drew me into this circle of wanting to advocate by getting on the school board. I have a lot of neighbors and friends who just don't feel like their voices are heard or that their concerns are really truly being heard by some people in the district office. And so I just really want a platform where I can advocate better for all the students in our community, whatever background they come from. I also, I always bring this up when we do things like this. I think it's so important for kids to see equity and representation all around them at every level. My children are children of color and they don't have a lot of instructors that they can identify with. And I think that adds to a lot of their success throughout their academic careers. And so I would like to be somebody that kids can look to and see, hey, there's that person that I can identify with that's out there doing all the things in the leadership role in our community that's speaking for us and advocating for us.
Thank you so much, Sam. We're going to move on to Melissa for our last introduction.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Melissa Hershey. Thank you so much for hosting this forum. I enjoyed reviewing your website and seeing all the wonderful resources that you offer families as education for them to advocate for their own students. I'm running for school board because I deeply believe in the value of our schools and I want it to continue to be great not only for my two boys, I have a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old, and they're thriving here, but for every student in our community. My career as a nurse and various community roles have taught me the importance of leadership advocacy and collaboration. I've consistently served others in all sorts of diverse communities by listening, problem-solving, and standing up for those in my care. Today, I bring that same dedication into an elementary school as a one-to-one nurse and special needs education para, working directly with students and staff. I intend to support our teachers and staff by ensuring we are using database tools to prepare and support our teachers and staff and helping prepare our students for whatever they choose after K-12. As Dr. Booth reviewed and the teachers described in the August school board meeting, we are working to shore up our curriculum and create a stable, common curriculum throughout the district so that eighth-grade algebra at Pioneer is the same as eighth-grade algebra at Trail Ridge. So that way, everybody's on that same foot and getting that same consistent education. I want us to catch up and excel from beyond where we were pre-COVID and I want to ensure the para vacancies are filled. Again, as a nurse para, I get to see firsthand how those paras are essential and help those students who need that gap, that extra help, how important those parents, paras are for them to maximize their potential. I want to serve as a reasonable and transparent communicator of the activities and business of the district, helping families feel informed and connected to the decisions that affect them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Melissa. I really love hearing all the different lived experience, professional experience, personal experience that people bring to their reason for wanting to serve on a school board. And I think that you all bring very different strengths and experiences that can really lend to a service on a school board. So, we're going to go straight into our first round of questions today focusing on student success. So how we define it, how we support it, and how we ensure that every child in Gardner Edgerton can reach their full potential. So we're going to go in the same, we'll start in the same order that we did introductions, but we're going to start first with, how can you define or what does student success mean to you and how should the district measure it beyond test scores? We'll start with Julie.
You're muted, Julie.
Sorry, guys. It's been one of them days. I'm committed to high expectations for all students by centering decisions and progress measured by academic achievement and student growth, ensuring quality regardless of their background, by setting explicit school board priorities for student outcomes and including adding academic performances as a regular board agenda item, regularly review and act upon the data to track achievement gaps, identify barriers and measure progress, especially for groups such as Latinx and individuals with disabilities. We must prioritize professional development for our staff and culturally responsive teaching and support for multilingual learners promoting instructional quality for all backgrounds. So everything is test scores by data. It's all data-driven. And that's what we have.
Great. Thank you, Julie. We'll go with Keith next.
I think that whatever we are measuring as our rate of success, that's what we teach to. And so right now, schools across Kansas and particularly in our district are teaching to standardized testing. However, after you get out of high school, standardized test scores really don't matter anymore at all. And so we really need to think instead about career and college readiness and even thinking farther down the road about gainful employment and having the opportunity even eventually maybe homeownership or achieve whatever sort of economic and social goals that an individual has. Now, you can't measure all of that for your elementary age and your middle school age in terms of as they go up. You don't know that until after they've graduated. And so there is a role for standardized testing in terms of benchmarking and seeing that there's movement forward from one test to the next. And I think that our school district does both a good job at that and teachers do a really great job at explaining what those scores mean to parents. Some of the pieces that are most challenging or most tied to policy happen at the state level. And so our school board historically has done a very poor job at advocating on behalf of student success at the state level, both to the state legislature and to the Kansas Board of Education. And so I think there's a lot of room for us to improve in evaluating other ways to measure success in our school district that more closely aligns with real life and adulthood and make sure we're measuring and teaching to that sort of success rate.
Thank you, Keith. Sam, you're up next.
I agree with a lot of what Keith said. I think that standardized testing can be useful, I guess, as a benchmark for progress. I think that we need to do a better job of preparing our students for, after they leave our school district, right? And success after high school can look different for every person. It's not necessarily a four-year college path. It could be going to a trade school. I mean, it could just be an internship or it looks like so many different things. And I think that we need to provide more options for our students to explore what fits them best. I mean, even me in my current role, you know, I'm 33 years old and I'm always looking at, okay, if I get this certification five years down the road, how much value is that going to add to me as an employee, right? And so I think we need to give our students a lot more choices. I do think that the results that came back from the state testing a couple of weeks or months ago now, I think it's really alarming where our ELL students are. We had our forums, I think, after that came out, and so I didn't touch on them. But after digging through it, I think that the foundation that we provide our students in like the elementary school level, even in preschool, I think that we need to put so much more resources behind that. I think our students, ELL students are doing okay at the elementary school level. But once they move past that, there's not a lot for them or parents to tap into to ensure that their success continues. So having that strong foundation, like shoring that up and then adding additional resources, being more intentional about the resources we throw behind those students so that they can continue that success. If you look at how a student does in one of our elementary schools compared to what they're doing in the high school, our ELL students, I mean, the change is pretty drastic. They start off pretty well and then it just kind of like the graph goes down, you know? And so that is so disheartening to see. We have a second elementary school that's opening up with an ELL program. We're not adding to staff. We are stretching the resources that we already have there rather than putting an organized effort into adding resources and not stretching our instructors even more than they already are. So I think that we're doing okay as a district, but I don't think that we should settle for just okay. There's so many more things that we can be doing to improve the success for all our students, ELL or not, you know? Adding those additional options for post-secondary education and then being more intentional about what we're giving our ELL students, our students with disabilities as well. We have to give them more than what we're giving them now. And I think there's a lot of different avenues that we can get there. But the conversation has to start and it has to be taken seriously as step one. So I think that's why a lot of us are wanting to run, right? To have that platform.
Yeah, several common themes in some of your introductions, for sure. Thank you, Sam. And then Melissa, you'll finish this out for this part of student success conversation.
Absolutely. So as mentioned before, student success looks different for everyone. Obviously, the students I care for in Julie and the special needs classrooms, that's going to look different, but it's just as meaningful and helping each child maximize what their own personal success and abilities are is the goal. And our goals should be to build strong foundations of learning and critical thinking and problem-solving because we know the climate for work is changing. And again, those post-education opportunities, everybody is going to choose something different that works better for them. So getting those foundations of, again, problem-solving, critical thinking, which I have heard from employers that that can be lacking sometimes after people come out from high school or even college. That is definitely something that we should be looking at. That is difficult to measure. Again, it's standardized tests, as everybody had mentioned, they're part of the state, it's for funding and that's how we gather data. But I would also like to see more of a focus on engagement. We have a lot of clubs, but there's also opportunities like the Kaufman Foundation has an organization called Real World Learning and it's a grant-funded organization that pairs school districts, teachers, and students with nonprofit organizations for them to take on different tasks to get what's called a market value activity. So a student may be paired with a nonprofit organization and they help assist write a grant for that nonprofit organization. So again, those real-world activities and career things, and I believe all the others have mentioned that we're all looking for a little bit more of that. And that's a great one right here in Kansas City that other districts have had a lot of success with. And I'd like to see that and more things like that implemented here in our district.
Thank you, Melissa. We're going to go in the same order to finish out student success and then we'll go in reverse to give everyone some time to shine in their first question. So I know some of you spoke to this a little bit earlier, but I would like to hear, how can the district better support students with diverse learning needs, including multilingual learners and receiving special education services? So you can reshare a little bit if you've already spoken on that or dive in deeper if you didn't the first time. And we'll start with Julie.
Well, kids with disabilities are, I mean, they're diverse. I teach in a lot of spread classrooms, but I've also spent this year in a lot of ELL classrooms. I know minimal Spanish, but I have learned a lot more since being in these classrooms. What we need to do is we need to get them more engaged in the gen ed classrooms, but also get the gen ed students involved with them. We just have to keep everyone engaged with each other and make sure everyone understands that, hey, people are different, but people belong and we all belong together.
Thank you, Julie. Keith?
A couple of weeks ago, I went on a class field trip with my fourth grader. And like a lot of field trips, teachers assign groups of students to you to be responsible for throughout the time. And so my group was my son and then two students. One was definitely an ELL student and the other, I believe Spanish was his first language. And what kind of transpired there is that the student who was an ELL student, I wasn't quite sure what his comprehension level was. And I think that there's value when we're bringing sponsors or helpers into the classroom to help give them the support they need on a field trip. So through the whole field trip, the kid who was more fluent in English had to interpret for the ELL kid. And that puts a lot of pressure on that fourth grader to make sure that this student who knows less English is having an enriching time in that. And so I think there's some support we can do there. In terms of special education, we have all the same issues that all the other school districts have. Para educators have high turnover rates, caseloads are too big. There's all kinds of challenges in terms of IEP minutes and balancing gen ed and IEP. And I think really what we need to start looking at, instead of just trying to survive in a broken system, is look for ways that we can improve that system, both at the federal and the state level. So a lot of the documentation policies for special education come from the federal side. And then the state side, the state of Kansas hasn't fully funded special education since 2011. And so there's a lot of work that can be done there. You think about decreasing the regulations and increasing the financial investment. It solves a lot of our problems and I think we need to focus our energies there.
Thank you, Keith. Sam?
So, again, agree with you, Keith, 100%. I think that there are a lot of things that we could do as a district to kind of think outside the box to get this funded. Because I mean, that's what it comes down to, right? We don't have enough funding, whether it comes to our para educators or having more like ELL staff or just people that can interpret in the district. I think that's a struggle. We have a lot of Somali families at my son's school and we struggle trying to communicate with them just for basic things, you know? And it's not something that the district can provide. And so I think, one, getting a full-time grant writer to find ways that are not the norm probably for what we're doing now to get that funding in. But also to touch on Keith's earlier point, doing more at the state and federal level, showing up to a board meeting is one thing, but we need to show up in Topeka. We need to go on those trips to Washington and talk to legislatures there. I know, one, I think Keith, your opponent mentioned this in one of our forums, how our state representative for this area, Bill Sutton, has always been big on helping fund special education. But the last two times that they voted, he abstained from voting. And so pushing our state legislatures to make the right choices and do right by our children, we have to apply the pressure at that level too, state, federal level. In the meantime, we are getting by with just a patch fix day-to-day and doing the bare minimum. And our students deserve so much more than that. And because that's what we're doing just to survive, like Keith said, we are losing so many para professionals in this district. They're choosing to go teach at other districts. And I mean, I know so many people that have taught here and then have chosen to leave our district because it's just a better situation there. They don't feel so helpless when it comes to helping their students. They have more resources. And so we're just doing a disservice to our students in so many different aspects with the approach that we've taken the last few years. I would love to see a more organized effort from our district administration to change that or find ways to approach it in a different angle so that we can get our students what they need.
Thank you, Sam. Melissa, you're going to finish this out and then you're going to start us in the next round as well.
Absolutely. So the best way to support our students, we all know parent involvement is a top priority. These students who specifically come from English language as not being their primary language spoken at home, the district is responsible for providing certified interpreters. Again, you spoke earlier about there are ones who specialize in politics learning. I know in my work, at the hospital, we had to have certified medical ones. And having the communication to the parents and having them feel clicked in and involved is one of the best ways that we can help our students. I'm glad that our website is available to be translated automatically in multiple languages. I believe there's more than six on there. I was really appreciative prior to conferences. I got an email reminder. It was sent to all parents. Hey, if you need an interpreter for conferences, let us know so we can make sure to arrange that so that they have that appropriately. Again, I think having parents included is one of the best ways that we can support our students. As everybody said, I think it's everybody's top priority to make sure our para positions are filled and remain filled so that there's those consistency for those students and that we support them as much as possible. I think that's something, sorry, I closed my car, everyone has as a priority here. At a previous forum, I mentioned the, sorry, car, don't turn off. Okay, previously mentioned that the salary for our paras is not comparable to what is available just so close next door. So as the others had mentioned, we are losing quite a few. So I would like that looked at to help fill those gaps so we can support all of our students that need them.
Thank you so much, Melissa. We're going to move on to our next topic, centering on safe and supportive schools, environments where students feel physically, emotionally, and culturally secure. So we'll start with you, Melissa. Our first question is, what does a safe and supportive school look like to you and what specific actions or investments would you prioritize as a board member?
Absolutely. So a safe school starts with locked doors, entry points, and the visitor screenings. But safety for a school is also about belonging. Students should feel like they're cared for. As Principal Kindler at Pioneer Ridge, where my son goes, says, "I want all our students to feel like they're part of the Pioneer family." And I'm thankful that the district added recently another safety officer for the high school. And the new no-cell phone policy seems to be helping a lot with safety as well as I've heard some early reports that it seems the number of fights at the high school has gone down and a lot of people are attributing that to the cell phone policy. I'd like to continue focus on consistent training and implementation of the new BIS program, the Behavioral Program, so that every school has the same supportive structure that students, staff, and parents can all rely on. And I think that consistency through the schools as the children grow up is just going to be really great in addressing behaviors and safety for our schools.
Thank you. Sam, you're up next.
So yeah, I think we are moving towards better physical safety with this bond that passed. I think that was one of my biggest anxieties when my son started school. Like I really contemplated, should I send them, should I not? Because you just, I grew up when school shootings, I mean, they were already a norm when I was in school, you know? And so having that anxiety added to being a parent, it was really overwhelming. So I think it's really comforting to see what they're going to be able to do with the bond regarding physical safety. But again, there is so much more to that issue of physical safety that we cannot control at the district level. We have to go to our state representatives for and push them to do the right things to keep our children safe. Now, when we're talking about a sense of belonging and children feeling like they belong at school and feeling a sense of security in that aspect, we need to do better as a district. For every kid, not just, you know, children with different cultural backgrounds, but our transgender students, our special education students, any child that feels different, I think we need to do a better job of making them feel like they belong and like they are safe. We have passed policies in this district that have staged walkouts from our students because they're not being heard, their concerns are not being heard. They don't feel like they're being taken seriously. And I think that the majority of our current board tends to look the other way or just say, oh, it's not enough of an issue. For example, one of the things that I brought to them last school year, or yeah, it was last school year, was when all the ICE raids were happening in Kansas City and just different parts of the Midwest. I had a lot of parents approach me because I'm a PTA board member, asking me if I could get more information from them or for them because they were afraid to. And so I go to my school's office and they're not able to give me a whole lot. So I go to the district, I speak at the board meeting and I'm told, well, it's not really enough of an issue in our community. That's not really a concern. Well, if you have one parent that is approaching you with that concern, then you need to take it seriously. It's not something that just brush off, you know? And even after a meeting with district staff after that, I walked away feeling so helpless for my community. I couldn't do anything to make them feel reassured in any kind of way. And I don't know if it's because they truly don't think that it's an issue or if they don't believe that there are enough of us that are different that have these concerns in the community that feel like, you know, they're affecting us directly. I don't know what it is. But ultimately, as a parent and as a stakeholder in this community, I didn't feel heard. I did not feel like they did a good job of reassuring me in any kind of way. So I can't imagine how some other parents in our district must feel when they approach them with a whole range of issues when it comes to our children feeling like they belong. And that was one of the very first things in this journey for me was that interaction. Because I still to this day have not gotten any information on what are your protocols to keep my child safe? What training do you have? If this situation were to come up in any of our schools, you're telling me you have a plan, but you're not giving us any information. You're not communicating that to the parents in this community. And so I still carry that little worry, you know, that if this were to happen, if this were to happen in our town, what's the plan? What are we going to do to protect our students, our staff, and their families? So we need to do better.
Thank you, Sam. Keith?
So I mentioned earlier that I own several small businesses in town. And earlier this year, I had one employee in particular who is a documented immigrant. And she communicated up through management that, one, she would always bring all of her documentation to work every single day. And two, is because she was worried that there was going to be an ICE raid in our facility. And I think this really points to the dichotomy of, or the connection between physical safety and emotional safety. So physical safety is something that can be measured in terms of various locks and security protocols and screenings and bulletproof film and all of those things. But then the emotional safety, that doesn't always have to be as logical or rational. So if there is a small chance that ICE can raid your workplace and with the recent Supreme Court ruling that allows at least some degree of racial profiling, there's some legitimate emotional concern in that. And I think that this is an issue where my opponent, who declined to attend tonight, differ. Earlier on in the campaign cycle, we were asked by one of the local newspapers, what our response would be if ICE were to come to the school district. And my opponent made it really clear that he would do whatever he could to make sure we don't get into legal trouble. And I think this is a place where having a master's in public affairs really helps because the US Constitution makes it clear that the federal government does not have the authority to usurp the local jurisdiction because the federal government, those law enforcement officers are funded by federal tax dollars. And everything else at the state level is controlled by the state and local tax dollars. And so we need to make sure when we have people in our community, our friends, our neighbors, our loved ones, that we're willing to stand up and say, this is not right. And so I would, I would definitely stand up from a legal perspective and try and fight any kind of unsafe or illegal activity. Of course, there is a legal process for, for searching for, detaining criminals with federal warrants and so on, but that's not what we're seeing across the country right now. I, I know that I, I stayed on that for a really long time. I'll just briefly say one, one other thing is, I, I mentioned, so the, the new bond that was passed, it put like bulletproof screen on some of the windows and some additional security and things, which do increase physical safety. But all the data is so clear that if we really want to increase physical safety in schools, we need to enact bipartisan firearm safety regulations. And there is survey after survey after survey that demonstrates that the majority of Americans support these things across party lines. It doesn't mean we support every single regulation across lines, but there's at least a handful that we do. And right now, not only is that not happening in Kansas, but our own state representative has been voting to go the opposite direction, making it easier to conceal and carry. And then also in President Trump's first administration, he signed a letter encouraging the president to remove policies or to act against policies that would allow firearms to be taken away from individuals who are deemed a threat to themselves or to others. And in the meantime, both my opponent and Sam's opponent have campaigned with this individual in the past and spoken up publicly, even at previous candidate forums in support of him. And I just, I think there is a conflict of interest there that really needs to be addressed so that our students and families feel safe.
Thank you so much, Keith. Julie?
Yep. What I feel is that we need to have a safe and supportive school in which everyone also feels, you know, physically safe, emotionally safe, and academically secure. Or school climate encourages positive relationships among students, staff, and families across all backgrounds. We need to advocate for comprehensive safety training for everyone. So not just the physical aspects of safety, but we need to have all the staff trained also on what to do, when there's a crisis, you know, how to hit your crisis button and not just have those trainings in a classroom. Have them out in the comments, have them out in gym, outside, on the field, you know, different places. To have transparent communication about the safety features with all the families, also what's going on. We need to help be, ensure accountability and high standards for all our physical safety measures and prioritize mental health. Mental health is also huge. The wellbeing and inclusion of everyone. So we need to use a framework like restorative practices and trauma-based, trauma-informed-based care and culturally responsive environments to where all students thrive.
Thank you, Julie. Our next question, some of you touched on just a little bit. And, and I will give a short plug. We have a Spanish-dominated hotline where parents from across the metro and sometimes way out of the metro call when they have issues in schools. And a full third of those phone calls are about bullying and discipline issues. And so this is really an issue that affects every single district, certainly in the metro Kansas and Missouri, but also nationwide. And so I would like to hear from all four of you, how the, how should the district address issues like bullying, behavioral health, and student discipline to ensure fairness and dignity for all students? And we'll start again with Melissa.
Absolutely. This is one I hear a lot from constituents as we've been talking about. I wish I could find the magic wand to eliminate bullying entirely. Haven't found it yet, but we need to make sure that, as you mentioned, we have fair and transparent systems. I think that, again, from what I've heard from parents, the transparency is sometimes lacking when they present a concern about bullying. They aren't getting good, consistent, clear feedback. Again, I am really excited when we were at the board meetings, learning about the behavioral program, the BIS program. Again, I really believe that this program with its consistency is going to help students and families, again, with those consistent expectations, those consistent things that will happen when behaviors are present. I do hope that is, is going to be as successful as it has been presented to us as an early, early, early feedback does seem to be positive for that. There is a good flow chart of how parents can address concerns moving up. When it's your child, obviously that is your top priority. Everybody wants your child to be safe and these concerns to be heard and addressed. And everybody needs to be treated equally. And that is the expectation. And when that does not happen, there are, again, our levels. There's administrators over each elementary school, over each middle school, and over each high school. And to, again, move it up the chain and make sure that these are being addressed properly.
Thank you. We're ready to hear from you, Sam, on this one.
So I think, I think it starts with truly listening to students and parents when these things happen. I have a number of friends in this community across elementary, middle school, and high school level that all have brought concerns to their school staff and feel like they're not being taken seriously. You know, sometimes when things are looked into, you know, maybe situations didn't happen the way that the student might describe, but that's not always the case. A lot of times there is a reason for concern there. And I feel like we are so dismissive of parents sometimes. And so a lot of the, I know currently, I know parents that feel so unseen and unheard to the point where they're considering taking their kids out of our school district and putting them either in another school district or in a private school. And so when you look at situations like that, clearly we have a problem. There is somewhere where there is a disconnect, where parents are getting so frustrated to the point where they feel like they have to leave, like that is not okay for us to have that kind of reputation as a school district. And I think that, I know I have a different, I have a different experience in that aspect because I will show up and I will, I will push people until I have those conversations with them. But I have to put in a lot of work sometimes to do that. And not every parent has that capacity. Or, you know, we have parents, parents who are, they don't have documented status. And so they shy away from situations like that. They want to be quiet and just kind of fly under the radar. And their advice to their students is, well, just, you know, try to push through until you're done. Or, you know, once we get to a situation where we can get out, we'll get out, you know? And that's heartbreaking to hear from some families. And so I think it truly, it starts by listening. I think our board needs to lead by example. When parents bring concerns to them, they have to make them feel heard first and foremost. And they, they have to do a better job of not making them feel like they're just dismissing their concerns. And they have to emanate that to their staff in all the schools in our district. My son's school, I feel like does a great job, but that's not what I hear from, from parents at other schools, you know? And so I think, I know I, I had a situation with a parent where we reached out to a current board member to try and bridge that gap because they weren't getting anywhere with the school. And the board member, we never got an email response from them, you know? And so I think when you serve on a board, that's part of what you're signing up for. You're advocating for everybody in your district. And if you're able to provide the platform where those conversations can happen, then that's what we should do, right? I mean, that's what you sign up for. And so rather than getting lost in, oh, this is really isn't an issue. Or no, our schools are great and just looking at everything through rose-colored lenses, we have to take every one of these situations seriously when they're brought up.
Thank you so much, Sam. And we are going to Melissa. Did I, I'm jumping in the reverse order, aren't I?
I think Melissa answered this one already. I think it might.
I was coordinating, so we're going to have a different order and I'm looking at the wrong list.
No, no problem. So I think that one of the hardest things when we're talking about students who bully other students is particularly if you're a classroom teacher or a staff member who's having to deal with it on a regular basis, it's easy to start to think, hey, this is a bad kid. And then they get treated in a particular way that may seem unfair. And I, I think that the place we have to start to, to recognize is almost all of that behavior starts in one way or another in their home life. So either they are expressing themselves in ways that they see modeled at home or they're acting out because they have some type of disruption at home or in, in some of the, the, the basic needs in their lives. And so it's, I think that the areas where we really need to, to look at right now, the school district with, you know, hundreds and even thousands of kids, we have, I think, maybe one, two at the most behavioral specialists who actually specialize in, in this type of behavior. We have, there is a partnership with Johnson County Mental Health Center. I, I used to work at Johnson County Mental Health Center and there's been back and forth between a lot of the school districts on, on those partnerships. And Garner-Underton has been one of the few that's gone out and then back in. I, I think though, we're dealing with a confined budget. We can't just create new money from somewhere. And so those partnerships with organizations like Johnson County Mental Health Center or Sunflower House are going to be paramount because they have opportunities to seek out grant funding in different ways than a public school system does. And I, and I think we really need to, to look at that. And then in terms of parents who are perhaps modeling this behavior, the, the school district can provide resources on parenting and so on. I think it's a challenge though, because the, the adults who maybe act that way in their normal, normalized may be not inclined to participate then in an extracurricular that, that may help them change their mind or their behavior. And so it gets to be a really difficult spot. I have lots of examples here, but there, there's a point when, if a student is experiencing behavioral issues or mental health issues to the extreme, that they are moved to another school where it's specifically made for individuals with behavioral issues. And there's a, you know, there's pros and cons to that entire model, absolutely. But if you have a student who's on the cusp of needing that, that becomes a very high-stress work environment for you as a teacher. And it's difficult for the, the other classmates in there who may be getting bullied. But the, the kid may be doing the best they can with the mental illness or behavioral issues that they, they're experiencing. It's a tough situation.
Thank you, Keith. And Julie, you'll finish us up on this question.
Okay. Keith touched base on something that's huge and near and dear to the basis of, I'll get into this. Behavior, behavior is a form of communication. So somewhere along the line, the student, the child is communicating something. They want and need a release of something. When they get to the school, you know, they're, they're going to do some type of behavior, either for attention, they're seeking attention, they need a sensory input, they need something. That's what communication is. To address the bullying, you know, a lot of that comes with behaviors also and all that. BIS, no one's ever, no one here in the forum has said what BIS is. BIS is a built, the Behavior Intervention Support Team. Basically, it, it helps disrupt disruptive behavior and calms kids, students down. Okay, I'm going to hit this. My twins have multiple diagnoses. They're autism and bipolar, completely separate from each other. Going to a day program or an off-campus facility for them isn't always the best option. What we need in this district, we have to have, is a school, a building, a program, whatever it takes, even if it's five students, two, a teacher or two, and a few paras in our district. So we're not busing students out to day programs. Somebody highly educated, who knows their stuff, who's also a behavior interventionist. We used to have one in the district back, she retired, I believe, 2016 or 2017. She actually retired, retired. I've worked with her very often. This is why I went into SPED. My kids have those high behavior needs. They would have been the ones that would have been into a different program, off-campus. They would have been into a seclusion room. This is why I helped change laws, to make sure that the Gen Ed students aren't feeling bullied all the time with them. But they also, hey, understand why is this other student feeling upset, frustrated, angered? And we can remove that student into a safe place, a safe room, where they can calm down. I've had to do that today, a few, to a few students. You can always tell, a lot of times with your SPED students, the barometer changes, the full moon comes in, you can always tell within a week, behaviors are going to escalate. So as a SPED teacher, you have to know when that change is coming and know how to address it. That will also take into the bullies and the concerns with the Gen Ed students at home. They're trying to communicate something. They're not getting a desire met at home. A lot of them come, you know, single parents, latchkey kids are still around. You know, we have to find out what that need is to adjust that behavior right away. Not in a negative way, but to make sure, again, that they feel strengthened and belong in school. So I can go on and on, but I will not.
I smiled at the latchkey comment. My brother and I were definitely latchkey kids growing up. Thank you, thank you, Julie. Note, we are still live on YouTube. I can see on the background that we were kicked off by Facebook. So I've let our Facebook viewers know that I will repost the entire thing in its entire conversation or that they can join us on YouTube. So I am keeping an eye on comments on both platforms. So we're not missing out on any questions or comments. I just wanted to let everyone know, everyone that's logged in here as well. We are going to move on to family and community engagement. As many of you have already touched on, families are the heart of student success. We'll really focus on how schools can build authentic partnerships with parents, caregivers, and community organizations. So I, I made a, a brand new list, so like everyone can get a turn to go first. So we're going to go Keith, Julie, Melissa, Sam for this round. And then we'll switch it up for our last topic. So Keith, if you could go first, I'll repeat that question. How can the district better engage with parents, especially immigrant, multilingual, and working families in school decision-making? I will also post it so you can see it.
Sure. So I think, so I've, I've worked for a lot of my career in the, in the marketing space. And we have a saying in, in marketing and strategic communications that for anything that we're communicating, there is both a push and a pull. And so there's an extent to which the district can be pushing and doing the best it can to push information out, but there's still at least one last thing that parents have to do to pull it to them. It might be opening an email or opening a text message, and that might be the only lift for them. But they still have to do that, that one thing. And so I, I think that the school district's responsibility is to make sure that we're doing the best we can at the pushing side of things. Classroom teachers, in my experience, so I have two kids in elementary school, one kid in middle school and one kid in high school. We've been in the school district for 11 years. And classroom teachers, especially through middle school, elementary school and middle school, have been doing a great job of sending multiple emails out to all teachers every week. I mean, to all parents every week. The, the challenge is that they're always in English. And so as technology continues to advance, particularly with AI, I think there's more opportunities to provide some other language options in some of those more day-to-day type communications. At the district level, I, I think that there's, the, the place that we struggle the most on pushing out information is actually at the school board level. So it is really hard as a parent, even as somebody who's as civically engaged as I am, to know in advance what's going to be on the agenda at board meetings. You have to get a very clunky system, click through about 10 different links to even open up the agenda. And they only opens if you have the right operating system and browser for it to work. And so there's, there's, that's a place that we probably are the weakest right now. And I think we could improve in that area.
Thank you, Keith. Julie, you're up next, and I did pin the comment just in case.
Thank you. How do we engage parents? We have to have little outside mini forums, mini get-togethers, especially with the immigrants and multilinguals, working families. Parents who work don't always work regular hours amongst teachers. A lot of them work 12 hours. My, my granddaughter's on her way over right now because my son's working and my daughter-in-law's sick. So my family has to bring my granddaughter to a Halloween event tonight. So a lot of things shuffled. But we have to keep everyone engaged and transparent in the engagement. We have to have, everything needs to be inclusive, equitable, and transparent. We have to listen to all the families, all their, their. We have to listen to all the families, all their their voices. If we have to have conferences, virtual, in-person, on weekends, later at night, we need to do what can accommodate families also. But we also have to realize that, hey, we're humans too, and we're teachers, and it's gotta work with everyone and everything. So even drop an email, drop a text message, hey, this is going on. That's how we have to communicate in a lot of everything. So we need to keep those doors open. And we just, you know, we have to break everything down and just, you know, make sure everyone's included in all our conversations. Yeah.
Yeah, so we can better engage families by just making participation easier. As was mentioned earlier, offering flexible meeting times or like the virtual things where people can watch later. I I stay up late at night, so I I appreciate being able to um check in on meetings that happen that I wasn't able to attend on at time after my kids are already asleep. And as well as when there are events, offering childcare for events. Um the principal um at uh the committee meeting for community engagement. Um he mentioned that that is the number-one way to get families to show up, is to have that childcare in place um for different events. Uh that can make a huge difference into getting people, getting people there. Um as again mentioned by others, communication going out in multiple ways, text, email, and newsletters is a great way for everybody to stay informed.
Thank you, Melissa. And Sam, if you wanna finish us out on this one.
Sure. Um so I think it, I mean, communication in our district isn't the best. I would love to see for them to push things out on different platforms. I mean, we have like a like a district Facebook page. But I mean, a lot of it is like highlights of things that they do throughout the day at different schools. But I mean, it's like he said, even getting to see the agenda is so hard. I, being on the PTA at my son's school, like we provide childcare so that parents can come. Like I have to take my kids with me sometimes because my husband's working late, you know. Um and that does increase the amount of people that are able to sit in and hear what we have to say. I think that's something that we should adopt at the board meetings. We should provide childcare so that parents can come to the board meetings. Um but I don't know if that idea's ever been floated or not. Hopefully, somebody picks that up and runs with it. Um I also think, like, for example, again, going back to the situation with the ICE raids that happened earlier this year are still happening. But um I had to try and find a network within my community for people who were being affected by that, that had the resources that we needed, that we could share with other people in the community. Um even looking at like our PTAs, right? I try to do it through our PTAs in our community. Hey, um let's get a representative from each PTA, see if we can have like an informational night for parents, because so many parents had concerns. Um and it was such a struggle getting to the point where we could connect with each other. And we have a district office that oversees all these schools that could step in and kind of bridge that gap for us. But I'm not seeing any kind of effort like that. And so I think there's a lot that the district can do to over-communicate things to parents. And it's not just, you know, helping different um niches in the community connect to each other. But sharing resources out, like we're talking about how to support our students academically. Maybe there's a resource out there or an informational night that, you know, this school is having that maybe isn't sponsored by the district but can help everybody in the district. Let's push that out and support that effort, things like that. I I take a lot of issue with the way that they communicate things today. I think they do the bare minimum in communicating things, even our superintendent's newsletter. Like it's an email and you're having to like scroll way down to find anything that's like kind of relevant and new. And so um I think that, I mean, you pick up your phone, everything's on your phone, right? Like you can scroll and find like a one-pager of everything that you need for the event you wanna go to this week in the community. Like things that are just easy for parents to digest. Parents who wanna be engaged shouldn't have to struggle so much to find the information that they need to be present and participate. And that's been my experience in the district so far. Um so I think we need to see that change. I know we're hiring a new communications person. Um but I mean, there's other things that we can do in the meantime. You can go on ChatGPT and translate something in English in like two seconds and push that out to parents. Um I know that teachers, they do what they can. I couldn't go to conferences when we had them a couple of weeks ago, and so my teacher accommodated and did it with me the following week, because I was out of town, you know, and like they, I feel like they're really good about being able to meet us halfway. But when it comes to families that don't speak English, they speak another language. You know, that's where we really struggle. I mean, I've had to step in and help translate for families. I'm not a certified translator, but I'm able to help. And if a parent asks me, I'm gonna do it. But I, we need to throw more resources behind that so that we can help the communication overall.
Thank you, Sam. So we talked a little bit about um how you would like the district to better engage parents. This next question, I'd really like everyone to focus on what strategies you as a board member would use to improve transparency and trust between the district schools and families. Because as we know, there are things district and staff does, and then elected board members. So we are gonna start with Keith, and I will pin the comment shortly, um so you can see it, but take it away.
Yeah, so I'm today, as long as I've been in the school district, I can't remember a time when we had um an elected board member who regularly kept up with public communication, either through uh a publicly available email newsletter or uh social media engagement. And I I know that those things are challenging and that, uh especially in a school district our size, school board members are volunteers. I get that. Uh however, those seem like pretty uh pretty much low-hanging fruit uh on ways to keep people engaged. Uh we've talked about earlier, mentioned uh even with this livestream, that a lot of people are on Facebook, but not everybody's on Facebook. So we can't depend only on uh posting on Facebook. Uh particularly as uh Gen Z and then uh the the gen after that start having kids in the school district. Uh they're less and less likely to be parents on Facebook. And so we need to, uh so I I as a board member, uh if I were in that office, I would have some type of at least monthly, if not weekly communications. Just an update on things that people need to know about. Uh and be able to share that with parents in pretty straightforward, clear ways. And then I also uh track a lot of state and federal policy related to public schools. And so letting people know when there's things going on at those levels and what they can do to advocate for their uh school district and for their children.
Thank you, Keith. We'll hop over to Julie next.
Okay, um in the twenty-five years that I've lived in the district, I do not believe that we've had anyone jump on social media or anything to say, hey, what's going on with the board? We haven't had anybody. So that's, it's since two thousand, it's been that way. Um what we need is, you know, we need someone dedicated, that could be our communications person. That could be part of their job is to engage and to make sure, hey, everything that's said in the board meetings is transparent. Either engaging in social media, um text messaging, you know. However, we need to reach out. We have, once in a great while, way back when, in the beginning, we've had mailers um that have come out saying, hey, watch for this board meeting coming up. We're gonna be discussing this and this. We used to get that maybe quarterly, ha- you know, twice a year, way in the beginning. We did have a communications person with the district way back when. Um she's now long gone, but that's what we need at this level. We need someone to to keep everything going, um the district, the schools, families, you know, to keep everyone connected. We just don't need that disconnect anymore that that we have right now. You know, it's, we we need to bring everyone together. And if it's one person in the district doing it, this communications person, or if it's the board president or the superintendent, or the the board itself as an entirety. Uh we need to bring everyone together, and we need to find that way to do it all.
Thank you, Julie. Hop on over to Melissa.
Yeah, so transparency and communication are obviously um issues that we've all heard from our constituents as we've been going through this process. Um I believe that we can all do more by hosting Q and A's. Um if people know that there's a dedicated time that they can focus their specific um questions and that they will be heard and not just part of it stuck into open comments at um at a board meeting. But I do appreciate the current board was very passionate about ensuring that our board meetings stay open for all public comments. Some districts um would limit, just for time's sake, limit how many participants could sign up on a certain night. Um and our board has chosen to make sure if you show up and you sign up and you wanna speak, you will get that opportunity. So I did appreciate that. Um personally, since I've been attending meetings since way back in May, uh when I decided to do this, I've been doing my little quick shorthand notes, because the, when you read the minutes, they can be quite long. And not all the details are what everybody needs to know. So um pro- uh provided that there's no, like, once you're an official school board member, you can't just have your own little postings about things. Um if if there's no uh no issues with that, I would really like to continue to do it again, just my short little scratch notes about about the top issues and posting that on. Um I currently have been posting it on uh the, on my Facebook page, but also um I an email out. Uh I know some people get a little inundated with too many emails we got, your teachers, the superintendent. But um people who wanna stay involved will take that next step and and open those. And I'd like to continue doing that to keep everybody informed.
Thank you, Melissa. Sam, you'll help us finish this topic.
Sure. Um so I have like a whole list of things that I wanna um so, social media, like it's it's such a powerful tool to push, push things out and to kind of um uh improve the communication between all the stakeholders in the community. Like kind of similar to what Melissa said, I I had hoped if I get elected to have like a synopsis of what was discussed, or just even listing the topics that were mentioned at school meetings, pushing out, hey, don't don't forget, tonight's the school board meeting. Just even those little reminders, like a Facebook, creating a Facebook event sometimes is so handy because they send you reminders in case, you know, life happens and you forget. Um but I would, me personally, if I were elected to the board, I plan on visiting PTAs in the community, because I feel like that's where you can really get like a pulse on what's happening across the school district. Um I know that school board members have the option to do that now. I don't see them exercise that. I've heard recently there was a visit to like one school, but I I've never engaged with a board member at my PTA meetings, and I've been on the PTA for three years. And so um I think that engaging with parents in that way can be very helpful so that you know kind of the concerns that people are are front-center in their mind at the moment. Um and like things like coffee in the park with the board, or even just me as a board member, if the rest of the board doesn't wanna come, just finding more opportunities where you can engage with people face-to-face. Um I think that those are all ideas that we should explore. And, you know, communicating everything out, not just at the the local board level, but like Keith said, things that are happening in Topeka, things that are happening in Washington that are gonna affect our school district. Um just so that parents are aware. Um but I, like, I already, in my mind and vision, being able to visit PTAs, visit the Latino Student Union at the high school, visit like the different clubs, like there's a like a board game club at uh one of the middle schools that I would love to visit, you know. And being a parent at another school, I feel like it'd be kind of weird if I show up now, but maybe as a board member, it wouldn't be seen as like stranger danger, right? But I think engaging with students and then being able to engage with parents in that way, like that's such that's never, like, there's no negative to that. You're gonna get way more than it's gonna take from you. And a lot of these things you can schedule out ahead of time. So like me being a full-time working mom, I can put it on my calendar and say, okay, this is where I'm gonna be this afternoon, or I have a free slot here, like what's going on in the community that could pop in and just interact with people. We need to see a lot more engagement from our board with our community members. My opponent has a social media page, and she hasn't, she hadn't posted in like four years since she ran the last time until very, like this month, you know, and like just things that are happening everywhere, not just in Gardner, but in Edgerton. Communicating with our constituents there, like, don't forget about Edgerton, you know. I mean, I I see people sometimes share things about here in Gardner, but there's so many great things going on in Edgerton too. Um and so I am really eager for that part of the role. Um because the little interaction that I have managed to have now has been so rewarding. I I just cannot wait to be able to do that on a much bigger platform.
Thank you, Sam. So for the sake of time, we're gonna move on to our final topic, fiscal stewardship and governance. Which um those of you that are watching, if you're not aware, that is a large portion of a school board's uh role and responsibility, right? One of the many things that board members do. So we'll really focus in on how the board allocates resources responsibly and builds public trust around that. We're gonna go in one final order. This time, we're gonna give Sam a chance to start, then Melissa, Keith, and Julie. Uh the question we're gonna start with specifically are what are your top priorities for how the district should invest its funds to support students and teachers?
So um I think it starts with taking a good look at our current budget. Uh I know that we have a finance committee, um and there are a lot of things that are discussed there. I know recently there's been a lot of talk about our budget for next year. A lot of people in the district are worried about how we are gonna be able to fund all the things next year. Um we're looking at not being able to give our teachers raises next year. And so anticipating maybe people leaving the district because of that, and our classroom size is going up. Again, I've brought up fi- finding a full-time grant writer that can just devote their entire day to finding ways to bring in additional funds. Like we, we are lacking in so many different areas when it comes to funding. And it is impacting our staff and our students directly in so many ways. And so um I think that while we can get to a place where we can bring in more funding, I think the federal level has been very unreliable when it comes to their funding. Um but again, we can keep pushing that front by engaging our our legislatures or representatives. But what we have control over here in the district, that's one thing that we can do to help bring in more funds. Engaging um all these companies that are popping up over the Kansas City metro that can donate, give grants to the school for different things, initiatives that we're trying to do, like we have talked about, um technology, right? And how we're gonna adapt to the changing technology in the world. Well, there are companies, I think Keith, you've touched on this a lot, that will come in and engage with us and ki- and even put in the funds to provide the um equipment that we would need to do that, you know. So that's one area. Um but prioritizing the resources that we have where we most need it. It's not just looking at what we have in the budget, like what money do we have available, but what areas do we need it most? Do we need to invest more in hiring the right teachers? Do we need to invest more in our um ELL students? Do we need to, you know, like there, it it's such, that's such a like a complicated question when you are not on the school board yet, right? Being in the room when those conversations happen and using your voice to advocate for all those areas that need that attention. And I, I think if elected, right, we'll be able to push for all those things that we see are lacking that the district has kind of just not paid enough attention to in the last couple of years. But um I think we need to move forward. Unfortunately, we need to move forward without expecting the level of funding that we've gotten, or the the level of support that we've gotten from the federal government. I think that we have to find other ways to bring in that money. Getting more money in, it has to start there. We can't improve all the other situations we need to address if we don't have enough funds to to put into them.
Thank you, Sam. Melissa, you're up next.
Absolutely. Um and the original question was, what are are my priorities for district funding? And thankfully, our community passed that hundred-million-dollar bond, and that's gonna help with a lot of the facility needs with gr- um building that new the new elementary school and the early learning center. Um so that helps. My personal priorities are, again, the para-education salaries. Classrooms, our Gen Ed classrooms work better when our students who need paras have their paras there. That helps all the students and getting that filled and getting our para-salaries being competitive for, again, how easy it is to just pop into another district that's nearby. And that, again, can pay better. It's it's very tempting and and we have some instability there. So that would be my top priority um going into it. Um unfortunately, in all things, when it comes to budgeting, the squeaky wheels tend to get the grease. Um so there's a lot of people who advocate for their own um individual little niche things. But um I think our priorities need to be in supporting our teachers and their education so that they are ready and prepared to teach our students and um whatever additional education opportunities that they feel they need. That would be my other top priority.
Thank you, Melissa. And then we'll go on over to Keith.
Public school funding is uh quite complex. So you have the local option budget, which uh is what the local school district uh has some leverage in in determining the mill levy and what that tax rate is for local property holders. Uh but then you have a funding that comes from the state, and you have funding that comes from um the federal government as well. And uh so there's, there's only one little piece that the local And uh so there's there's only one little piece that the local school board has control over or or any kind of levers to really pull in the real in real time in terms of year-over-year budgeting. However, our state legislature has actually put restrictions on what power local school boards have to manage even their own budget. Uh and so I, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the state level. We've had a lot of policies uh lingering from uh way back when uh Sam Bromback was our governor uh that uh public schools almost went bankrupt. And so um coming after that, uh there was a Supreme Court ruling that um that required our state legislature to uh increase funding for public schools. But that was a ten-year ruling and that's that's failed. And the only reason that public school funding hasn't been cut at the state level is because that was, that's been vetoed multiple times by Governor Kelly. What that means is this next year, um every uh every state representative, uh the governor and about half of the state senate is up for reelection. And so who, depending on who gets elected, um if if it looks like the same uh majority in the legislature and we get uh Republican governor, uh that school funding will almost definitely be cut uh starting in the twenty uh seven, twenty-eight school year. And so in addition to being fiscally responsible with both our current budget and with that bond, we're going to have some pretty significant legal battles in within the next uh within within the span of the terms of those who get elected here. And I, and so it's really important that we have individuals on the board uh who will speak up uh a- and uh fight for our students.
Thank you, Keith. And then we'll hear from Julie on this topic.
Okay, um my priorities, actually, we're we're going to do um invest the funds. Invest the funds is, you know, with our budget. Um yes, we have gotten, received this big, huge bond that's going to change Sunflower into an early childhood center. We're also going to build a new elementary school up by Pioneer Ridge. We're investing in other district facilities and and teacher pay. But we also need to, we really have to increase that teacher pay and the support staff pay. Um that is one of my top priorities, is to hire and retain quality educators and support staff. Another one of my goals, sorry, this sounds coming right into my eyes as I'm talking and doing everything, um is open and honest communication and everything. So with transparency, we need to listen to feedback from all the families, educators, students, and include them in all our decision-making. My last one, but not least, is strengthening our special education and inclusion. It's not just special education, but we need to include all backgrounds, all ethnicities, all programs. Everyone who is believes that they're different, we need to include them in everything. Um we need to raise the bar and close the gap and improve outcome for all our students while focusing additional supports where the needs are the greatest, which is support all our students.
Thank you, Julie. So the next uh the next question seems really high level as it's written. And so I want to give a little bit of context. I'd love to chat about how you'll ensure transparency and accountability in financial decision-making. But really, for someone that's not um on a board of any capacity or doesn't run budgets for an organization, what does that really mean? I I follow education news nationwide and sometimes you see parents saying, we've spent all this money where the outcomes or our kids aren't learning or teachers are saying, yeah, you increased our pay, but you took away a planning period. So, you know, and I, all kind of evens out. So thinking about what transparency and accountability, I know that's a big umbrella question. Um but we'd just love to hear from all of you, your thoughts on how you could ensure that that is happening around financial decision-making within Gardner and Edgerton. And and we'll start with Sam.
Um so I think um communication, right? Communicating what we're doing, like what the funds are going to. Um I know that um one of the recent board meetings, um we discussed a lot of this, kind of. There was like a flyer that they gave out, but um I think that we need to make that information more accessible to parents so that they can see where we are allocating all these funds, what it's going towards. Um and then looking at ways where we can measure, right? How successful it um the efforts are where we're putting our money in. Um me, as like, you know, a parent going into the district for the first time, I would have no clue where to look for that, where to start. Uh do I call the district office? Do I email? Who do I email? Do I go on their website? Where on their website do I need to go? I mean, just putting it somewhere where it's easily accessible and it's digestible for parents who don't know what this stuff is or don't dabble in it a lot. Um so I just, I think transparency translates over to communicating more effectively with all the stakeholders in the community. Um and by being more transparent in that aspect, people can be held accountable when things are not being invested where they should be or the outcomes are not where we want them to be. It will allow people to s- to see what's happening and say, hey, I think maybe we should try something different, you know, so we can get that um have those interactions with the community members and maybe pivot if we need to or just hear all the different perspectives and and different aspects of what's going on in the community um and just modify it if we need to. I think a lot of times we we say, okay, we need to do this and this is how we're going to do it. And while we would like for the plan to stay intact, I think, especially with the world we live in today, things are going to fluctuate and so we have to be able to flex where we need to and not view changing a plan as a failure, but just as a modification to get to the same end result.
Thank you, Sam. We'll hear from Melissa on this one next.
Absolutely. So as mentioned, the budget is quite a lot. We have a whole administration dedicated to the finances and budgeting. They just recently presented um the budget for two thousand five, twenty-six and it was approved by the board. Um I would like to see um and really encourage the administrative staff at the individual schools to um work on this as part of it, as part of the transparency. I know they have recently, um again, I my stu- my oldest is at Pioneer. So um they recently had the PTA pay half of um getting the office repainted and just I would really put it more on the schools to be more communicative and transparent about how they are spending it in on that level. I feel that's going to connect more with parents and students as well. Um I feel like uh there are attempts with different bar graphs to show the breakdowns of how the money is spending. Um but again, as I, as a school board member, I would continue to try to do my summaries as someone who, you know, I'm a science girl, uh not not a budget girl, but to to take what um is presented by that uh finance committee and make it more, as as Sam said, digestible to people and help communicate in that way. But I would um uh really touch base with all the administration of the individual schools to be um posting and sharing more about that, again, to so people feel more connected with how that money um at that level is being spent and, again, opening up that communication more.
Thank you, Melissa. We'll go on to Keith next.
I think you hit the nail on the head, Trisha, when you mentioned that uh most of us don't have that uh board level experience in accounting. And even um I've been on lots of like nonprofit boards, but it's a different uh it's a different experience managing a budget for maybe a few hundred thousand dollars or maybe even a million uh dollars versus uh an organization that has a nine-digit budget and over a thousand employees. And so it it is complicated. So there are a couple of different ways where uh parents can really get involved. We already talked about the ways in which the district can push out information. So aside from that, um when the board is making financial decisions, uh before it comes to the board, it goes to the finance committee. And that committee is made up of uh two to three board members. One of those three board members would be the chair of the board. It would have uh two to three administrators and teachers and there are just parent volunteers. Uh and uh recruiting parents to be actively engaged on committees has really been a weakness uh in our school district. We have some committees that have no parents on them. Uh I know of parents who have applied to be on a committee, but no one's ever reached out to them. And so there's a really a breakdown there. Um and so the the board, though, as the people's voice is being elected, they're really responsible to take the the community's voice into those meetings to help drive what then goes to the board meeting um where uh where it's actually voted on, decided on. Both committee meetings and board meeting are open to the public. Uh my opponent's been on the finance committee. He actually missed twelve out of thirteen of the committee meetings this last school year. And so already, the uh the opportunity for uh parents to uh voice to their elected representative and have that be shaped has been been cut. And so I think for one, just being willing to show up uh to board meetings and if those times don't work, being able to communicate and adjust that uh or being transparent with the constituents in advance, not something that just comes out uh uh in a campaign time. Uh and then I I think that um uh as we talked about before, right now, the the school district's doing the legal requirement in terms of communicating about budgets and that's the bare minimum. And so uh you uh it's really hard to even find where the budget documents are uh and you have to request access. It's it's a mess. So there's a lot more we could do uh and it has to go beyond just the bare minimum.
Thank you, Keith. And then Julie, this is our final question and you're our final answer before we move on to a wrap-up.
Um I agree with a lot with what Sam and Keith said about, you know, with the budgets being hard to hard to find in the district website. It's it's very hard. But when you do see it, it's hard for people to read. Um some people who know numbers and know how to crunch numbers and are data-driven, we can see those numbers and translate it to those who cannot understand those those big numbers and how it translates into every day and being transparent to everyone else. Um but other parents, I'd say the average Joe parent or the single parent that multitasks a lot and looks at the budget and goes, I don't know how to read it. Um you need someone that can explain it to them step by step at a school level and then at the district level saying, hey, this much is spent on this, this much is spent on this. This is how much, if you have a student in special ed, this is how much your student receives in special ed funding that goes to all their services. Um it's it's based in different areas. These are the areas along with the budget. The budget has, you know, a whole bunch of different areas. You just have to look in and go, oh, okay, I can read that. Some of us can. Um you also need someone who is very transparent and say, hey, you need to be able to, easy access, easy for parents. And you can take that the big information and narrow it down to the smallest detail saying, this is what I want. This is the information I need. How do we translate it to my level?
Thank you so much, Julie, for closing us out. I know um fiscal stewardship, governance, budgets are kind of a difficult thing for the general public to wrap our minds around, but it's really important when we're wanting good outcomes for, what did we say, six thousand students and a thousand staff? So we really want to make sure that um local, state and federal money and then if additional nonprofit or funders uh money is is going to where it needs. So we appreciate you breaking all of that down. So we are going to close out for this evening to honor everyone's time. I know the four of you have got to be so busy. Election season is almost wrapping up, so I'm sure you're still knocking doors, calling people, reminding people to vote. Um but before we log off, I would just love to hear one last time from every candidate. Um I would say keep it to thirty seconds, but I think you might stretch to sixty. So just one last final minute um and answer this problem. In one sentence, describe the legacy you hope to leave if elected to the Gardner Edgerton School Board. And we'll start with Julie this time.
Okay, um to leave a legacy of equitable opportunity, academic excellence, community partnership, where every student, regardless of background, has the support to succeed, where families feel heard and valued, where tax dollars are stewarded with transparency and accountability and through evidence-based decision-making and inclusive engagement, strengthen the foundation of our district to better serve both today's learners and generations to come. Yes, it's one long sentence.
Perfect, perfect to wrap us up. Uh Melissa, let's hear from you next.
Absolutely. The legacy I hope to leave if elected is that our community feels informed, engaged and proud of our schools, that our academics rise above pre-COVID levels and that Gardner Edgerton leads the way in preparing every student for success in whatever path they choose.
Sam, you're up next. I'm going to restart you. You were on mute.
Sorry, yeah. Um uh the legacy I hope to leave um is one of integrity, collaboration, um equity and lasting impact in our community. Um if I have to give one sentence, that would be it. There's a lot more that goes into it.
That's all right. You know, voters have heard from y'all from for an hour and a half. And so I think that they've gotten a lot of really good information. Let's give Keith the opportunity to do his one and a half liner.
Uh when I I used to work in the county manager's office at uh for Johnson County Government, I part of the ethos there with uh public service, I came around this this one thought. So this is my one, this is my one sentence. Um simply uh the the legacy to leave it better than I find it and um I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Keith. And that concludes tonight's forum. Thank all the candidates in this very busy season for spending an hour and a half with us and voters from your district this evening uh digitally and for community members who joined us and navigated the shift of platform midstream. We will be reposting the entire thing to Facebook uh after we conclude. Just as a reminder, your voice matters all three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, but especially on voting days. So make sure that you're able to vote. If you didn't do it during early voting, it is on Tuesday. Um and encourage your friends and neighbors to do the same. Thank you all again and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Adios.